I'm a painter, I work for the large association sheriffs and police chiefs. And we're here to try to help you find a police chief. And we think you've got four great candidates in front of you tonight. But I want to talk a little bit about process and how we're going to roll out this evening. And then answer a couple of questions that some of you may have. But I only want to talk for a few minutes to devote as much time as we possibly can to the four candidates that are in front of you. The way the process is going to work tonight is typically in our processes, what we recommend is that there be an interview panel process, followed by some type of a meeting with the council. In most cases, or in some cases anyway, those are semi-private, for private. And then there's also a community forum that will follow. So in this case today, we've already accomplished part one. And part one is the interview panel process. Part two is this council process that we're about to engage in here. And then follow the seven o'clock, we'll do the community forum process. In both the community forum process and in this process, what we're looking for more than anything is your high level input. We're looking for impressions. Do these candidates project and present themselves as a police chief that will work well here in the city of DuPont? In terms of, I know there were some questions regarding the release of information. I can tell you that typically, we do not release any information other than to the panel members. And generally, when we do release information, it is the day of, like 30 minutes prior to the interview. The reason for that is, is that we have experienced processes that have been spoiled by elected officials, by analysts, by anybody that has their information. Because they'll go to the internet, start doing their own background investigation, instead of allowing us the opportunity to have a professional background investigator do the work. So they bring up their information, or being from me, but sometimes it may not be totally accurate, that they pulled off of the internet. And that will then tarnish their view of the candidates or anything in their history. And we would much rather have complete information where both sides of the story have been vetted, and then the complete picture can be presented to decision makers downstream. The second piece of this, the other question that I'm told was asked by, by some of the members of the community is, why do we need to do a community forum? And our recommendation is that we always do a community forum. And the reason for that is, is that in some people's, some decision makers' opinion, the selection of a police chief is the most important decision that they'll make. Now, I'm not suggesting that the city administrator isn't important, and that the public works director isn't important. But the police chief typically, because of the dynamics that relate to law enforcement and their community, can be a little bit different than those other relationships. The person that's leading the police department typically has a lot of influence on how a police department is going to behave and react once in place. And so we consistently ask in our, we encourage and recommend in our processes, that there be some level of community involvement. Whether it be a community forum, whether it be some type of interchange between community members and the candidates. And then the candidates have the opportunity to provide information to those making the decision. So in this case tonight, in your case, we're asking that when you're done, that you take a minute and either jot down your feelings, your comments, your thoughts, your impressions, and share them with the mayor or the city administrator, or talk with them, let them know. Because after the community forum tonight, the next piece of the process is that we're going to caucus and decide on who's going to make it to final interview tomorrow. Sometimes the decision makers decide on one, sometimes they'll take two or three. But it's important that you provide information to those that are in those positions so that they can make that happen. The community will also be provided the same opportunity. However, the difference between the community forum and this opportunity is that you have structured questions. They won't. This is a meet and greet, kind of a mingle environment that's going to be occurring later. There won't be any opportunity for public comment in front of a microphone. The opportunity for the community to provide information will be on the cards, brought in a suggestion box that will be provided at some point here. And so there's a difference, and it's important that in both cases, what we're looking for from both the community and from you are similar to different dynamics. Obviously, in your case, as you're looking as elected officials at the candidate, you may be looking a little differently than the community members may. It may be the same. But everybody has their own perspective. We're interested and we want, I'm pleading a little bit, to get your information, your feedback, and provide it to either the city administrator or the mayor. Tonight, the way we're going to roll out the council process is that when I'm done, I get to be the hook tonight. Because we're up against in time already because I've been talking too much. And so what's going to happen is, is that they're going to be provided a couple of minutes to introduce themselves to you and talk about why they are the best candidate to be the next DuPont police chief. Followed by, you have six questions in your panel behind each of the candidates. The way that we typically work these is that the candidates decide, two of the candidates will answer each of the questions, and they decide which candidate. So it's kind of like a leaderless group discussion. But since there's only six questions, we're going to try, we're going to try to let each of them have their shot at each one of the questions, and we'll rotate through so the first person isn't answering the first question each time. I've told them in advance to get a minute, and on the hook. And so be concise, be deliberate, be thoughtful. But they get one minute. And they wanted me to share with you, and I agree. They wanted me to share that, please understand, they only get a minute, and they'd like to talk for an hour. But they get a minute on each, each one of the questions. And so I don't know if this has been helpful for you. I hope that it has. It's been a pleasure, true class, employees, community members, fellow partners in law enforcement that were involved in the process earlier today, everybody I've met at DuPont, Dawn and Bernadette and other staff have been terrific to work with. We really believe that you're going to find, you're going to have a top-notch, top-notch police chief at the end of the process, involving one of these gentlemen in front of you today. If there's any questions I can ask, I'm happy to try to do that, you know, right now, but... Yes, sir?
Yeah, I have one question. Can you talk to this?
Yes, please.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I have one quick question, as you said, that we have to share with the administrator and the mayor and so forth. Can we do it one at a time, or group, or is it right after the meetings?
Yes, that's my question, thank you. I think that the best way that I've experienced this working is that while the community forum is going on, that you have an opportunity to make your way to each one of them, to either talk with them, or to provide them with information. There was some note paper that was passed around. Whatever you're most comfortable with, they, they should be observing, and I'm guessing they will be observing, the community interaction between the candidates and the community. And so there should be ample opportunity for you to be able to go up and say, you know, that guy at the beginning talked too long, or whatever. So whatever works easiest for you. Notes?
So we could, we could warrant to talk to the administrator?
I wouldn't.
Okay, enough of that.
Because we're going to cut to the finals tonight.
Got you.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Okay, with that, we'll start here on the end with Bob Shant, and then work our way down. And like I say, I'm the hook, so you know the rules.
First of all, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, sir.
My name is Bob Sheehan, I'm presently your interim police chief. And just a little background, again, I grew up in Newport Island. I joined the Air Force back in 1977. I spent four years in the Corps of Air Force Base in the security police. From there, I was hired by the Tacoma Police Department and spent 31 years with Tacoma. During that 31 years, I was a patrol officer for approximately 12 years. I got promoted to detective, then I went to sergeant, and I went to lieutenant, and I was then appointed to assistant chief. And I spent the last five years with Tacoma as an assistant chief of the Operations Bureau of Tacoma. I retired in 2012, but to get started to put together our own business, well, this opportunity came forward and hit me out. Just to back up a little bit, during the time I was working for the Tacoma Police Department as a patrol officer, I worked many different arenas, did some specialty things. I worked in the traffic division. I rode a motorcycle. I worked in the SWAT team as both a house and negotiator and a sniper. I know that's a little bit odd, but I did both of those things, learned a lot during that timeframe. As a lieutenant, I worked in a sector in the city of Tacoma, the south end of Tacoma, and had people, the people that worked for me were involved in community policing process. I know a lot about community policing during that timeframe. I think you need to know that I was a project manager for the Tacoma Police Department's construction of their headquarters and their cell stations. That was a wonderful, six-year experience. I was also involved in the levy bond to raise money to get that project going. It was a success. As assistant chief, which I think I enjoyed the most, my career at Tacoma, I...
Thirty-second, Bob.
Okay. I had a lot of experience working with personnel. I had about 280 people working for me. I worked in internal affairs as a sergeant detective and a lieutenant. Since I've been in your city, I've enjoyed it very, very much. I haven't had enough time to analyze it completely, but I've met the community, I've met the officers, and I love it here. I'm done. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill?
My name is Wayne Spears, I go by Bill. I'm from Willows, California. My history includes the fact that after high school, my first years of college, I went out and joined the Marines, spent three years in the Marines. At the conclusion of that, the latter part of that was with the military police court liaison and civilian police liaison. So I got a privilege to interact with civilian law enforcement from the military side. So I found it rather interesting. I left there, went to the Santa Barbara Sheriff's Department, where I worked the jail as a jail deputy. I found out I felt like I was doing a life sentence by a 10-hour installment plan. And then a new job came along, the University of California Police Department, for a field position as police officer, and I took it. And I worked in the community violence, where the method of patrol is foot patrol and bicycle patrol. It gave me a real unique spin and experience as far as dealing with people. If you're not in a police car, you're right there with everybody every day. From there, I went back to work standard patrol in what they called South County. Later, I was moved to North County Operations, where I worked patrol, I worked detectives, including homicide detective and burglary detective. And then I was assigned to the crime prevention unit. Then that spun to what they called Rural Crime Prevention Unit, where I worked with a state task force in dealing with strategies and development of laws and things to deal with crime that was happening to the ranchers and farmers in California. It gave me a unique experience to be able to work directly with state agencies and to interact with the state legislature as far as the proposing of new bills, new laws, and so forth.
Three seconds.
After that, I went to summary police, worked the gang unit, traffic unit. I was in charge of our community-oriented policing team. Then later, I became a chief in Willows for the last six years. Willows is a small community, about 6,500 people, very similar as far as size. But I'll tell you what DuPont has, Willows beat hands down as far as organization and plans, because it's, I understand, it's a, or a planned community. Eight kids, and associate science degree, associate liberal arts degree, and a bachelor's degree in my teaching credential. As far as that, thank you very much.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Captain Byrd. I am currently a captain with the Wayne Indiana Police Department. I have 24 years of law enforcement experience. I started out as a patrol officer. I have worked in the police academy as an instructor. I have worked in community policing. I've also worked as a DUI enforcement officer, and a field sobriety testing instructor, and a drug recognition expert instructor. I've also worked in a street crimes unit as a supervisor of a street crimes unit, targeting burglaries and metal thefts. And have also worked as a street-level supervisor, looking over patrol officers and helping them out in their duties. I've worked in internal affairs and had great experiences working in internal affairs. It's given me a good idea of the internal workings of a police department. And sometimes good things happen, sometimes they didn't. I have also been in charge of our crisis negotiation unit and had very good experiences with that. I'm currently in charge of our narcotics unit and oversee 30 officers that both do uniform patrol and undercover detective work. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Indiana Tech. I recently finished my master's degree from Indiana Tech in organizational leadership, and I'm also a graduate of the FBI National Academy. I'm a strong proponent of community policing and know that collaborative efforts between the police and other agencies in the city is really the way to go. Thank you.
Thank you. Ross?
My name is Russ Osterhout. Brief history. I was born and raised in New York State, in Montgomery, New York, which is in Northern County. And I joined the military, I scored in the US Army back in 1974. Spent 21 years in the Army, and basically the majority of my time in the Army, I was in special forces for approximately 18 years. And retired out of here at Fort Lewis in 1995, out of first special forces unit as a sergeant major. And before that, before I got out, I started testing for different law enforcement agencies. The primary one I wanted to get hired by was Thurston County, I live in Thurston County in Olympia. Got hired by Thurston County in 1995, right after I retired, about a month after retiring from the Army. I spent approximately 10 years there in Thurston County as a patrol officer, patrol deputy. All my time was spent on the road, I worked in the southwest portion of the county, majority of time in Rochester, Grand Mountain area. My supervisor was Casey Salisbury towards the end of my stay there in Thurston County. And when he got elected sheriff over to Mason County in 2006, in 2007, he asked me to come over there as a chief criminal deputy. So I went over there with him as the chief criminal deputy, which is a big step up from patrol deputy to a chief criminal deputy. And I've been there for six and a half years. I'm in charge of basically patrol and detectives, all law enforcement, the road officers and detectives, consists of about 44 personnel. And I liked DuPont, I always saw, seen DuPont ever since, I've been here since 94. I saw it grow, and I always enjoy just watching DuPont, how it's organized, how it's been planned. And with my, me and my wife, and later my daughter, would drive through here and just check it out. I just, it just seemed a really great community, and really, this is basically the only, only place I ever put in for a chief position. I did one, put in one city down in California, I got turned down down there. But when this came open again, the first of this year, I decided to go ahead and put in for it, see if I could get picked up here in DuPont, and period, just be the good in my law enforcement career. Thank you.
Thanks, Russ. Okay, so the way we'll work the process in terms of the questions for you is that I will ask the question, and then we can have two follow-up questions, short ones please, following each one of those. And hopefully, I'd like to be able to break us at 5:2, so that people can stretch their legs or whatever before the community forum. If you have individual questions that you would like to ask, please do so during the community forum. It's okay to ask follow-up questions related to anyone that are asked here, but we should probably try to confine those to two per question, otherwise we're going to be way over and at risk of not being able to get all the questions in. And so the first question, and we'll start with Russ and work our way down the line and then rotate through. What would you like us to know about you regarding your interest in this position, and what makes you the most qualified candidate?
Well, like I just stated before, is the interest, the interest I have here for DuPont, like I said, this is the only, basically the only place I really wanted to put in for a police chief position. I watched DuPont grow, even though I know it's been here since the early 1900s. But it really started to grow back in 95, I believe, 94, 95, and I watched it grow. And, and I really seem to, I like to drive through here and check the community out. And plus, 30% of the community here is active-duty military. And I kind of can relate a lot with the military since I'm retired out of the Army, especially out of here at Fort Lewis. And just before I came here, I'm one ahead, got here a little bit early, I just took another drive through there, just watched the people running, because I like to run still until my knees give out. And everybody, I like all the trails that are set up, and I really want to be part of this community. And my, my wife and I were thinking about moving here...
Ten seconds.
...a while ago, but we have to sell a house, so that's going to be a hard time right there. Thank you.
Okay.
My interest in DuPont is, my wife worked for the US Army two years ago at Fort Lewis. So she lived here for several years in Kiwala. So I would come and visit her as much as I could, and we both really liked this area. It's a very nice area, much, much cleaner and nicer than where we're from. And she would have the opportunity to come back here and work for the military if possible. She's a licensed clinical psychologist. She worked for the Army, and now she continues to work for the Army as a student. I'd like to move here and be part of this community, and it seems like a very, very nice community, and I'm very interested in it.
Okay. Bill?
The first part of that question, as far as the only, what qualities what I can bring to the table to become your next chief, is I have a wide assortment of background, as we kind of talked about earlier. And each one of those things assisted in me in developing, I have over 20 years as a supervisor or manager to bring forth, as well as all the technical background that I've had over the years in especially assignments. The question, of course, is why DuPont? Well, when I was first notified of it, I have, I have relatives, I have family that's up here in this area, in Lakewood and Covington. And then I have one young man that I taught early years on, who was a deputy sheriff in Pierce County. And they kept telling me, come up here, look at it. And, but I was committed to my career where it was.
Ten seconds.
But unfortunately, when it was cut short because of budget cuts, it freed me. So we have a dual situation, where I now am free to come forward and look to where I'd really like to go, which is this town, this city. At the same time, you have the opportunity to give my vast experiences that I can bring anew to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
I think that I bring the qualities and experience that the city needs. I have the connections and the relationships that I've developed over my career in the local area, and I think that's very important to the future of the police department here. And I've been given the opportunity by you to be your internal police chief. I've come out for a month, and I've got to know citizens, I've got to know council to a certain degree, and I've got some of the officers of the department. And I feel very capable and very confident that I can take this police department to another level. Thank you.
Thank you. By the way, a reminder, I can see that Mr. Cortez is pulling out pages, which is smart. He's put, in any kind of candidate are individual pages. Whatever works easiest for you, I just wanted to let you know if they're available. Any follow-up questions for the candidates on question number one?
I guess, I just got a... A lot of you said that you like this community. I think we all like this community. It's a reason in all of us. What is about it in particular? Rush, you mentioned that, you know, you like the fact that you're close to the military, that you like to run trails. What is, what else about it? Have you, have you had an opportunity to look into other deeper statistics about the city, you know, where's the income levels, crime levels, things like that? What kind of background? Other than the community looks nice right now? Which turns out a lot.
We looked into the crime level, and I guess this is the most crime-free city in Washington, I think in 2000. And I saw that the majority of the crime, it appeared to be fraud, fraud cases as the, you know, I believe after that, you had simple assaults, and then, so the crime statistics doesn't seem to be that, that large. But also saw in one of the articles, I believe online, I can't remember where I read it, that the, there's a lot of break-ins, there's starting to get a lot of break-in to vehicles over there at the Park and Ride, over by the railroad station, I sort of read, so...
Ten seconds.
And that's, but I have, yeah, read about all the other statistics, especially about crime and income levels around it as well.
Any other candidate want to take a shot at that question?
If you don't mind. Me from California, I, again, I was told by people that live in Washington State, and I had been here several years ago. And I really enjoyed the state at that time, but I felt obligated to my career where it was. And of course, when that ended, and then I was free to make a choice, I was, I was encouraged by others to look into it. So I started again, looking at the city, looking at as much material as I could read. It's interesting to see you folks in real, because I've watched all your videos from your city council meetings. But the thing is, is that as I continued the process, the more I studied, the more impressed I was with the city. Today, I spent the day walking downtown, talking to a lot of merchants. I also traveled probably almost every street in town, trying to just take a good look and a good breath of the community. And every time I turned around, I talked to relatives, I talked to different people. Everybody was so positive. Plus, I'm coming from a small city, I have an 11-year-old child that I want to continue to grow, an 11-year, in a, in a small community, in the school system here, when I talk to the principal day, impress me beyond belief as far as the quality of education. So all those things together, and you look at this.
We've got to move forward. The next question, we're going to run out of time. Let's start with Kevin. Next question, what would be your top three priorities as police chief?
My top three priorities as police chief, the first would be to create a community policing program, a form that has already exists, for the community, which would involve assigning specific officers to specific neighborhoods, and making sure that those officers regularly made contact with those community members. Also, creating community policing within the business district as well, so that a business owner would have a specific officer to be able to contact and say, hey, look, we're having these problems here, can you help us out? By making those contacts with those specific officers, that's going to create a very good partnership between the community and the police department.
Thank you. Bill?
Open the communications between the police department and the community. And the way you do that is through different programs, such as Neighborhood Watch, Operation Identification. I saw some Neighborhood Watch signs out there, but there's different ways of doing it, and what I would do is do in a network type of concept of bringing it together, so there's an inner core of recording. Another is develop a Volunteers of Police Services, or what's commonly known as VIS, volunteers. City Hall currently has volunteers helping them. I'd like to take that a step further and have them over there. And another would be the explorer, law enforcement explorer roles. And then the other aspect is to, every time that there's an activity, to ensure that there's some representation of the police department there, to interact with the community at all events, so that they feel comforted. And then at the same time, make sure that we have as much information on the internet, and then of course, my walking around, all the time talking to people.
Thank you. Bob?
The first thing that I would like to do, and I have been doing, is to meet the officers, understand what's going on with the officers, with the department and the city itself. And the results of that have gone for immense right people, and there's a good foundation on the military. Get out and meet the community, whether it's going to the lines meeting, which I did recently, or be with the military, all those things need to be done. So what I'm doing is I'm analyzing the police department and the city to understand it. Once I have the understanding, I think the next step would be to develop a strategic program. Thank you.
Ross?
Well, the first, the first thing I would do is get my feet on the ground and meet everybody in the department, find out who they are and how everything is run, how their schedule is, how their, their vehicles are run, how their trainings run. Just learn everything about it as quickly as possible, and just so I can curb it, how things are being run, and if anything needs to be changed, I can change it if it has to be changed. It's a fair first thing I would do. And in community police, and I'm getting out there and meet the first, the citizens of this community as, as quickly as possible, as much as possible, just so I can learn what, what kind of issues they may have with the police department, if any, and what other issues that may come up. So I'd like to come to these types of forums like this, and just meet as people as much as possible, and get the community policing involved, and also look at the reserve program. I believe there is a reserve program here, and make sure that is still in fact running. And also the explorer program, if not, try to get that sorted up also. I believe you have a citizen academy here, run every once in a while with you. I'd like to check in on that.
Five seconds. Thank you. All right. Question?
Okay. I don't want to dominate this, but a couple of you folks are, have military backgrounds. I think most of them want to, with the base next door. At the same time, Bob, you mentioned reserve program, and I'm wondering, do you see an opportunity to perhaps get some more reserves in the program by interfacing with the military across the street?
What first would you do?
I think that's a great idea, and it's something that can be done. The first step, and I mentioned already, that I've met with the military, to start to develop the relationship that needs to be developed, to find out what is available to us with the military. With, I think it's 62% of the population either built active duty, or retired, or involved with the community, that's very, very important. I think what we need is to get a snapshot of the community and understand the community, and then as we develop the relationships with these other groups, again, get back to a plan and a work that can help us develop a program that would help with reserves. We currently don't have a reserve program that is active, so that's something else that I would like to get... that I would like to get started.
Thank you. Kevin?
I started off as a reserve police officer for two years, and my agency acquired me becoming a full-time officer. I'm a strong advocate of a reserve program. I think it's a great way to benefit the police department and the community. It allows community members to serve their community and do good for the community as well. So I would highly advocate for a good reserve program.
Question asked, two questions, and we'll see if there's any follow-up after the second question. First question, we'll start with Bill on this one. What is an innovative community program that you have implemented, and how would you go about instituting a similar program in DuPont in a climate of significant budget challenges?
There's two different programs. One would be the Law Enforcement Explorer program. They run themselves as far as cost analysis. They do fundraisers, and they buy their own uniforms and so forth. You do that under a very regimented type of policy manual and so forth. And it falls under the Boy Scouts of America under their Explorer programs. And the second one is more of a general type of community thing. I started a program called Junior Police Camp many years ago, and it's for young people that, you know, they see police with all their regalia, they get all nervous and everything about them. So it's a three-day program where you introduce them to the police department, to the police officers, and what we're all about, show them all the little gadgets and all that stuff.
Ten seconds.
And at the same time, it builds upon, and you do that through the Parks Recreation Department. And it's been very, very effective.
Thank you. Bob?
The program that I worked in Tacoma, I think, is important, answers his question with this DUI enforcement. Tacoma had a very low number of DUI arrests. After reviewing the statistics, I worked very hard with other officers and members of the department and the community to develop a program that went from, I'm gonna say, the low twenties to maybe fifties to nine hundred arrests a year, working on a thousand when I left. That program is something that's done regionally, it can be done within budget, they can actually throw money to the department to do, we can be very helpful with enforcement, it's very important to our state and to the safety of people.
Thank you. Russ?
Well, in Mason County Sheriff, in Mason County Sheriff's Office, I reinstated the reserve program there. I got faster enough, we did a Reserve Academy back in 2010, in which I was a couple, or the academy commander. And we got that going, and I'd like to do that here. I didn't realize they didn't have a reserve program active here, but same thing happened to Mason County, it wasn't, was inactive there, just kind of petered out. But we wanted to get the reserve back going again, so we started an academy going, we got seven reserves, and a lot of those people have kind of moved on, they've been hired. We actually did hire one, one reserve full-time, and we're trying to get the other one full-time. And a couple of the other ones, one to the Squawson Island and Skokomish PDs, the Crowell Police. And what we did, we did send a couple more to the Fight Academy, Reserve Academy, and it's really, it's difficult, it's really difficult to start a reserve academy locally without outside support or other agencies. Yeah, we'd like to do that here, but it is, it does cost a bit of money.
Thank you. Next question, we'll start with Bob. How should the council decide which department should gain additional resources during the budget process?
Can you say, ask that question?
I can. How should the council decide which department should gain additional resources during the budget process? What I do? Oh, I'm sorry. Kevin? I'm sorry. Sorry about that. My apologies.
Thank you. One of the initiatives that I created as a commander before in the police department association team, we were having issues with having call-outs, suicidal barricade call-outs, where we would not be able to treat the person properly. Myself and my team collaborated with our local mental health providers, so that any time we had a suicidal barricade call-out, we could do our own seventy-two-hour emergency detention order, which would involve us contacting a mental health doctor, and then the mental health judge, and then we would take that person to the hospital, where they would be forced to stay for at least seventy-two hours, and it would help them get the correct treatment that they need. And it was, it was a good program for us, and it's still in place today.
Thank you. Now, what question number four? Right, Bob, you ready?
One more time.
How should the council decide which department should gain additional resources during the budget process?
Thank you. I think the council has made decisions about what the priorities are, and what I would like to do is to, the council and the mayor and the city administrators work with you closely on the issues that are developed as we, as I analyze the department, and try to figure out how to bring it forward from there. But we will look for cost savings in every opportunity, and there are some that I've already noticed. Thank you.
Thank you. Russ?
I can.
How should the council decide which department should gain additional resources during the budget process?
Well, yes, they have to analyze the, whatever budget they have, and we did have a lot of issues there in Mason County with the budget, especially starting in 2008, we had to do a lot of cutbacks. And matter of fact, we lost three deputies because of the budget issues that we had. We were able to hire a couple of those back, but weren't able to get all of them back like we wanted to. Also had to do some other budget cuts as well, some other personnel, animal control. So we have to look at all the priorities and all the departments, within the departments, and have to set those priorities. I mean, it's, public safety is one of the top priorities, I believe, so, but all the other departments need their funding as well. So we all need to get together and basically decide on these issues.
Thank you. Kevin?
Well, I know times are tough all over, and I think any way that I can help out with helping decide what budgetary issues would affect the city, I would certainly be glad to and open-minded to. I know that public safety is a huge part of your budget, and, but other agencies also or other departments need money as well. So any way that I can help cut the cost for the police department, whether that be through free training, or providing free training for the officers, or other departments, I would certainly be open-minded to do that, and help out any way that I can.
Thank you. Bill?
As stated, within the city of DuPont's strategic plan, it says that public safety is a top priority. However, with that being said, as a chief of police, my job would be to find ways to, find innovative ways of sources of money, whether it be grants or other types of things, because if we can take things off general fund issues and still maintain the services, that relieves or releases the general fund money, so that other departments and other parts of the city can still go forward. We also need to look at different economy actions, look for fuel costs as far as finding the cheapest fuel cost, and look for other technical types of activities that would lessen our daily impact of fiscal, fiscal footprint and how we do it. Again, the biggest thing is use your volunteers a lot to do like vacation checks and things of that nature, so that you can still accomplish your mission.
Ten seconds.
But maybe modify the scheduling or staffing of your police department, still keep the mission intact.
Okay, the interest of time, last one, and then ask for the council if they have a follow-up. Question number five or six, we'll start with Russ. What is the most significant professional challenge you have faced in your career, and how did you overcome it?
Well, I believe the most challenging was one I, one from Roque County and Hurst County, to the Chief of National Deputy in Mason County. That was about the most challenging at the time. And I really, it took a, it's a large, it's a huge decision for me to move over to Mason County and to be the Chief of National Deputy for Sheriff Salisbury. He asked me to, and I had to think about it quite a bit, and I talked about it with my family, my wife, and actually it was a little bit of a pay cut, and, but to me, it was a challenge. It was a challenge, and for me personally, and it was a great department over there in Mason County, the sheriff's office. And I overcame it because I went in there, jumped in first, and I just went ahead and did what I had to do, and helped out, Sarge has helped me out a lot, and we got through it, and I'm doing a good job, I feel now, and everybody else there, I believe they all get along fairly well. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin?
My most significant challenge in my career was when I was in charge of the neighborhood response team. As the supervisor in charge of this unit, I was tasked to try to balance my time between four different quadrants and answer the four different deputy chiefs for their crime concerns. It was not an easy task, because each one had a different crime concern, and each one wanted all of my resources all the time. So the challenge was trying to balance all four deputy chiefs and their concerns, their crime concerns, and I did that in the most professional manner that I could, and did that through just trying to divide my time up and my team's time up as best as I could to address those concerns.
Thank you. Bill?
Operationally, I'd say that the, one of the most convenient or challenging things I had to deal with was to provide crowd control during the Michael Jackson trial. That itself was rather unique, because we had somewhere near about thirty thousand people every day protesting one side or the other on the issue. But the other one is probably the most challenging for me, was as a chief of police, having to make a hard decision to terminate someone from their employment and what they did, and I've had to do that.
Thank you. Bob?
I think the biggest challenge for me was going from lieutenant to assistant chief. And the challenge was I had a smaller people as a lieutenant than I went to, two hundred people, I think eighty-something people, you know, all the uniform people within the police department, including all the specialty teams. And to overcome that, what I had to do was listen to people, listen to the advice of my captains and lieutenants, and then get advice from, and mentoring from the chief of police to go ask me questions. In the third month of that position, I ended up in charge of a protest in Tacoma time class that lasted for eleven days, included, I think, ten, at least ten, maybe fifteen different police departments to keep the ball rolling down there. That was an act of challenge for a brand new assistant chief. A result, it cost us a million dollars, nobody got hurt. Expensive, I tried to get money back from that, we never reimbursed for that. Went to court eventually, because we had sued, and we won that case. It was a privilege, it was all part of it, but a heck of an experience. Thank you.
Okay, before we ask the last question, all the questions from council members. Councilmember Bill?
Thank you. John, you've all said that you like community involvement, that's great. Could you be a little more explicit? How are you getting community involved? What, what, what do you think you're involved?
Two of you, start with Kevin. Bob?
Well, council member, I think I've already started to do that. I have been to meetings, I've been to both schools, I've been with, I've been to Lions meetings, and gone, so going to meetings and going to events, getting to know people, understand people. But I go back to the, what I said earlier, I'm putting my time, hold my time for a second, David, all right? Okay, so what I've done is go in and listen to people, not just, and make sure you hear what they're saying. There's a difference. You can go and talk to somebody and walk away and not interpret what they said, you have to listen and understand. Then you have to analyze. You just can't jump out there and do something without analyzing first, and then making a decision, and working with other people in the city. So public works, the fire department, the city administrator, the mayor, the council members to figure out what's the next step in some cases. And other times, you can go forward on your own. The police department can handle it, and they can do it, and it'll be acceptable. So that's what I'm talking about. I haven't said the word community policing, but I like this opportunity to say it, it's very important to me. That philosophy is what I grew up under, and that's what I'm going to implement here if I can successfully end it. Thank you.
Bill? The question is really much broader than it actually appears, because in my case, my intent is to become a, to live here, work here, play here, and save it. But the idea is, is that I look at being an active community member, soccer coach, basketball coach, boy scouts, Cub scouts, then help with other events as they come along. And then I also happen to have the pleasure and the responsibility of being the police chief. First, a very active member of the community, and doing those things to enhance the quality of life within the community, both as an individual and as a chief. It goes south and it goes the other way around, just because I'm the police chief.
Ten seconds.
You come involved, but it's the other way around. And I currently do that, and I do that here too.
Last question. Start with Kevin. Two parts. How do you plan to get involved in the community, both on and off the job? And how have you gotten yourself and your department involved in the community in your past positions?
Well, I plan on being involved in the community by attending different events within the community, whether it's Lions Club meeting or other community meetings, and making myself as visible as possible. I also plan on going around and introducing myself to different business owners, and making myself known, and doing that throughout the community. What I've done in the past to get my officers involved in community policing, I haven't had much experience with that. What I will say is that I will really encourage each officer to be involved in community policing, and go out and be in the community, and be involved in the community.
Thank you. Bill?
There are numerous events throughout the year that are held here within our city, and the police provides police stuff there, you know, I mean, we're out there directing traffic, all that. But where I'm looking at is, is we need to get involved as a participant of the event. You know, as I've stated a few moments ago, I'm actively involved in different programs. The, you know, recreation would be getting tired of seeing me, because I'd be beaten on your door all the time, what's going on, how we can, we help. The formation of a police activity league to get some funding sources or whatever to help expand the recreation at no cost to the taxpayer. But the bottom line is, is that it is, it's an issue of involvement as a person.
Ten seconds.
And then turning to your troops and saying, hey, join me, don't go do it, but come and join me. And so you show by leadership that in fact you are community involved, and so that's, I've done it in practice, and I'll do it again.
Thank you. Bob?
I have already volunteered, and I promise you I will be the auctioneer at the next auction, following on. Good passes, footsteps, they're rather large, but I will try my best. And I mean it, actually, that has happened, but that's an example, follow around, and being high-profile in the community. One of the other candidates said it, I can't say it any better, but he said that you have to be seen and to, and listen to people, and to be heard. One simple thing to do is to get out on foot, or on neighbors, or they'd be out there with you, or on, or with an officer or a ranger from your side. Talk to people, meet them, greet them, let them see you. If there's an event occurring, be there, be available, answer questions, talk to people, let them see you. This is what I did in Tacoma, and I was successful, and proud of that. Thank you.
Russ?
Well, as everyone else said, it's basically getting more visible out there, introduce myself to all the people, the citizens around here. Go ahead and go to these different events, and try to get the officers to do events also. And just go ahead and make yourself more visible, contact all the businesses, just introduce myself, and tell them who I am, and ask them if they have any issues or what have you. And just get out there and meet people. And it could be on duty, off duty, basically on a chief's position here, pretty much twenty-four seven. Just go out there and contact people and introduce yourself, and let yourself know. Thank you.
That concludes our structured questions. Are there any remaining questions from council members? Ma'am?
We heard you talk a lot about how you would interact with the community and whatnot. How will you treat your officers? We want to have a healthy department. We want our police officers to be mentored. You know, what, how are you going to develop that relationship with your police officers?
We'll let each one of the candidates take thirty seconds with this question.
Thank you. Great question. Needs to be done. This police department's been through a lot of fast, and it needs to grow from that. What needs to be done- What needs to be done is to, uh, number one, you have to meet with the union, that's going to be a weekly, monthly, whatever, you know, you decide to do, you have to meet with them. You have to meet with each individual officer, and talk to them, and find out what's on their mind, and what their, their issues are, and let them know that they can have an open door to your office, and come in and talk to them, they need to. This department's small, and for that can happen, and, and I will tell you what's actually happening now. Uh, besides that, um, get out and live with the officers, spend time with them. In my case, I don't, I don't know what they do, I haven't worked a shift here. Yes, I've worked in Tacoma and other places. You, you have to get out and work with them, and they have to feel good about, uh, the fact that you've worked with them and understand what they're doing. This has to be a team, it has to be a team approach here. It's only for this department to be successful.
Five seconds.
And I am working on developing a team for you right now. Thank you.
Russ?
Well, I'll go out there, make sure, introduce myself, get to know them. I, my other agency in Mason County, I have an open-door policy. Matter of fact, my office is right next to the patrol, and the tech is over here, so I always have my door open. Anybody walks by, they can come in, no matter what I'm doing, they can come in and interrupt me, unless there's someone in there with me, the door's closed. But otherwise, the door's open, they come in there, talk to me, and I, I encourage that. I encourage that they come in there, if they have any issues whatsoever, whether it be job-related, personal-related, let me know. I want to make sure I do the same thing with the officers here. Thank you.
I have an open-door policy, and I will, I will continue to maintain that. I, I mentor to other officers in my agency, and I'm here, I think it's a very important aspect of police work for younger officers, who have mentors that have experience, and I would certainly continue that here. Um, I know that trust is an important issue, I would certainly build up trust between myself and the police unit and the officers themselves, and I would do that by just being honest with them and, and authentic. Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Whether it be an open door, just open communications, we have, you have to talk with the officers, even in my union, but we also have to develop their skills, and we, and who knows better than them on what skills they need to have developed. So we talk to them, and as in the case what I did as chief currently, is that, uh, I, I, I made sure that all my supervisors got to the appropriate supervision and management schools, and I was even able to get one of our, our sergeants to the FBI academy. So it's those sort of things, and then we recognized other areas that we, where we needed, uh, specialized training in the department, and we made sure that was done, and, and, and to make them that, build your own.
Thank you. Candidates, excellent job, appreciate you taking the time, good answer to council. If you have additional questions, uh, we're, we're out of time, and we're going to move into the community forum here, but we want to give everybody a leg stretch, break for just a couple of minutes if we can. Um, please approach the candidates individually during this opportunity. Thank you for your, your follow-up questions, very much appreciate that. We'll reconvene in the last five minutes.